The June 11, 2019 special meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. We will be led in the pledge of allegiance by, we'll be led in the pledge of allegiance by councilmember Alex Montero. There's no invocation. Please stand, everyone, please.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Yes, just Pastor McNeil, just not yet. We're going to be having the regular meeting and that's where you're going to be able to do the invocation and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. For special meetings, we just do the state business, I guess. Thank you, thank you for being here. Okay. So, we have three items on the agenda. You should be able to have picked up the agenda at the entrance or online. You should have observed it, but anybody wishing to comment on these three items are going to present, be presented, please come up to the podium. Oral communications now, can you read the, can you read the guidelines for oral communications?
Pursuant to government code section 549, 54.3, the public should directly address the legislative body concerning items that have been described in the notice of special meeting.
Anybody wishing to speak on these three items? Anybody wishing to speak on any of the general meetings items or anything in general could just wait till we re-adjourn for that meeting? No? Okay. Councilmember Watt?
I think we're still waiting on one more person. Do you mind if we start with the third item? I think the presentation they have on there?
No problem, absolutely. At this, so we're going to go through the first two items from councilmember Watt and we're going to go to the third and we'll come back once the individuals are here or that. Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
Can you please begin your presentation?
Yes.
Your five to 10-minute presentation. It applies to you too. Just kidding. We just have a loaded, a load of, a big, heavy-duty agenda today, so we need to get through a lot of these things, okay? So, we hope you guys can stay with us throughout the meeting.
Good evening. My name is Josh Armstrong. I'm the Information Technology Services Manager for the City of Hawthorne. I'm going to give you an update and introduction really for the South Bay Council of Governments' regional broadband initiative. This initiative was originally started back in 2016. It's designed to create a leased fiber ring that is going to connect all the cities to, um, gather. It's designed to allow us to, can you not hear me? It's designed to, to allow the cities to share information and get better access to lower-cost internet service. We've been working through the project for quite some, some, some time now and as it has been progressing, we found that there are two certain things that are eligible for the City of Hawthorne to actually latch onto, which is allowing a data access for our regional public safety partners to access the City of Hawthorne data as, as well as get a much higher internet capacity that we're currently utilizing. As shown on the map, this is the current data access for the regional data centers. It's not redone, it, the new ring however would, would, would be redone, it's so as we see on the right side, the data would be able to flow in both directions versus right, right now for, for the different cities, each individual cities has this kind of haphazard Some of the highlights in 2016, as I said, when the project was originally put to, um, gather, the South Bay Cog put, put together a RFP, excuse me, and onboarded a consultant to help with putting together this project. We did release the RFP and a vendor was selected that was American Dark Fiber and in 2019, those plans moved forward with site visits. One of the notable changes however was one of the original point of presence, the data centers that we were going to access was one wheelchair that's actually been moved to a data center that's located here within the City of Hawthorne. The contract however is still under negotiation. We don't have solid pricing yet. We don't know exactly what, what the contract's going to look, look like, but it is becoming more and more attractive. Some of the steps for Hawthorne, the Hawthorne ITS has been involved in the project since, since its beginning and a member of my team has, has been meeting with the group on a regular basis. We've been providing the feedback on all of our systems. Hawthorne does remain interested in the one-gig data service installed to the city's primary data center at the police department, the apartment included in this would be the internet service, static public facing IP addresses, as well as a few other integrated services, all with a three-year term. We validated our design with the South Bay Cog's own technical consultant and it's been deemed to be the best fit for our particular network. This information has also been, been shared with City Manager Shep here. At this time, the South Bay Cog has secured measure and funding to cover the installation of, of the fiber to the cities, the so-called non-reoccurring costs. Obviously, you have to build this, this thing out, there are costs involved with that. Measure and funding is, is going to be used to cover that, so all that the city has to incur is the monthly costs. As previously mentioned, the contract verbiage has, has yet to, to be finalized, so I can't give you exactly what it's going to look like, however, we have provided a sample to the city attorney's office for review. The project is still moving forward, however, I don't expect to see anything tangible until April of 2020, prior to, to which the actual contract and the formalized terms would, would be brought forward for approval. The overall project, like I said, is, is still fluid, parts, terms, scope are still highly in flux. We do remain onboard and looking forward to the future and the benefits of this particular project. Any questions?
Through the chair. Thank you, thank you Officer Armstrong and thanks to Chief Ishi for jumping onboard this very important project. I'm on the board of the South Bay Council of Governments and we thought very early on that this was something that all of the cities should take advantage of. Can you go ahead and explain why this is beneficial to our city?
It's going to provide cheaper internet access for the city currently. We're paying roughly $2,000 a month for our two gigabit internet connections. We're looking to lower that between five to, between $500 and $1,000 a month moving forward by moving over to this ring, as well as Hawthorne is a host for a public safety enterprise resource system that, that our regional partners do access resources here at Hawthorne and those folks would then be able to use this ring to access those systems so that we don't have to have these point-to-point connections that they're paying for to actually get onboard with us, so everybody wins.
And for those who are not familiar with what a fiber optic network is, why do we need that?
It's more resilient than the standard copper. It's, 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 it's less susceptible to interference from other factors within the world and it does have a much longer lifespan. We can get greater speeds out of it. We can look at one-gig speeds, two-gig, 10-gig, 40-gig, 100-gig speeds as the city continues to grow.
And can you see this as being an attraction to businesses to our city?
Eventually, yes. As, as the system-
And why would that be?
As the system continues to build, build, build out and we start adding more and more city services as we continue to move forward, especially with the new MUNIS system that we're deploying, more and more businesses, more and more residents can actually latch on to this particular system and access more city resources.
Thank you Officer Armstrong and thanks Chief Ishi. Maybe there are other comments from other councilmembers. Any other questions for anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, one of your presentations ready? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, today, as you can see, we have a lot of people in the room today. You know, as, as I do every year, we give out, the Awad Family Foundation gives out scholarships to students within the Sentinel Valley School District. A lot of our Hawthorne residents go to Lawndale, Hawthorne and Losinger High, so we just took the opportunity to, to help these students and recognize their academic achievement, as well as help them with a scholarship for, you know, books and housing and stuff of that nature, even though it's quite expensive now. So, for now, it's the fifth year that we've been giving out the scholarships and I think now we're at 30 students so far, so knock on wood, that's a, that's quite, that's quite an achievement so far for a lot of these high schools seniors that we have in Hawthorne. But before I give them out, we do have our superintendent, Dr. O'Brien, can you stand up as well? I want, if you can come up as well and kind of give a little insight on the award night that you hosted.
All right, Mayor Vargas, members of the bor, or the, the board, the city council. I get kind of used to saying that, members of the audience. It's an honor to be here. We so much appreciate the support of the Hawthorne City Council. It's an honor to be able to work in the City of Hawthorne. It's a wonderful city and we are so grateful for all the support from all the different members that are on the, on the council and we're so grateful for that. And each year, we are so thankful because our students have lots of needs and they have lots of accomplishments and when we can put donors in connection with these students that have created such great accomplishments, we are so thankful that our senior awards nights, we're able to, individuals like councilmember Awad are able to give scholarships to our students and the senior, and Alex Montero is also there as well. I mean, he wears lots of different hats, he always tells me that. He's, "Okay, I got this hat on, I'm wearing a different hat later." And we're just so grateful because the students, it gives them that little extra push to say, "I can go to college, I can achieve, all my hard work does pay off." And while it may not pay for everything upfront, it gives them that little bit of extra push and so whether it's Hawthorne or Losinger or Lawndale, every single school gets an opportunity to receive scholarships, the students are encouraged. And one of the things that is the most exciting for me is to see all of the students supporting other students, so whether they receive a scholarship or not, you can just feel that electricity in the air and the excitement and we are just very grateful for all the support of the city and for all the members that do give to those scholarship funds. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope you have some, also some of the principals here as well, do you mind if I introduce them as well?
All right.
A crucial element to-
Yes, and again, I had, I've been a principal before and I think that's probably one of the best jobs I ever had. It's so exciting to be able to be at a school site, working with teachers, working with students, working with classified staff, the parents, and knowing that when they're there for me with those four years, that you can really transform lives and we are so grateful for the principals that we have. And so, we have, I can see two and I don't know if, oh, and I see all three, so there we go. So, I'll first have up from Lawndale, we have Dr. Paula Rotas. I don't know if they want to come up or whatever here, and then we have from Hawthorne High School, we have Dr. Vanessa Landisfine. And then from Losinger High School, we have Dr. Pam Brown.
I don't know if you want them to say anything or just say hi?
No, I just wanted to introduce, if you have anything you wanted to say to the students that were recognized that each individual school or-
I just want to congratulate Grace and Matthew. You guys are shining examples of what it means to be a Cardinal and we're so proud of you and what you've done so far and what you're going to do in your future, so congratulations.
We have a lot of Hawthorne students here and as I told them earlier today at graduation, we, they've done an outstanding job. We're really proud of each and every one of them and we can't wait to see you tomorrow walk across the stage.
I'd just like to say congratulations to all of the CV students on receiving the scholarship from the Awad family. As he said, it's been the fifth year and we appreciate what you are doing for the students in Sentinel Valley.
And if I may just add one more thing, you'll be seeing a little bit more of Dr. Brown in the future because she is going to be the new principal at Hawthorne High School and so we're very excited about that. As an individual, she was one of our, we, when I first started here, we, we started awarding individuals in our district with awards, the best teacher of the year, classified of the year, and administrator of the year. She was our first selection and then she went on to win for the AXA Region 14 Secondary Principal of the Year. So, we're very excited, she's going to be coming, bringing her wealth of knowledge. She's been at Losinger for most of her career, including she graduated from Losinger, she taught at Losinger, but an AP at Losinger and now principal for many years. She was one of my first hires, so I'm very proud of her and she will be coming to Hawthorne High School and bringing just a kind of a, a different spin on, on what's going on there. So, we're very excited about that. Thank you.
Congratulations, Dr. Pam Brown, so I'm glad we're having you back here in Hawthorne High. Well, without further ado, I want to bring out the students that won the scholarship. First, we have, oh, no, we'll keep that one here. Oduku Grace Metu, is she here in the audience? Jacorlo Hernandez Santiago? Chelsea Rodriguez? I think that's all six, so again, congratulations to you six. We'll bring pictures in the front as well, but real quick, one of each one of you kind of like, I just worked your plans are going, because you know, you have some of these students that, your ranking GPAs are from like 3.8 to I think like 4.67 or some absurd number up there and I was talking to Dr. O'Brien and I'm afraid that, you know, if I come next year, I'm going to start calling out GPAs of 7.2, 8.8, 9.9, so you know, if we can kind of put a cap on it, that would be great, but, but no, these students have, have achieved quite an academic success and just wanted to try to highlight, like I said, where you're going to school, what you're going to be majoring and yeah.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for the scholarship and all of the things that you have given to the Sentinel Valley School District and I'm going to be going to UCLA to major in psychobiology with a minor in sociology, hopefully following pre-med track.
Oh, wow.
I'm going to be going to UCLA pursuing a physics major and I'm very grateful for everything you've done and I know that scholarship will go to good use, so thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for being here and thank you for having me and giving me this wonderful opportunity. My name's Melissa Bintazo and for the fall of 2019, I'll be attending UC Riverside and I plan on majoring in public administration with a minor in business. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Matthew Romero and I want to thank everyone for being here and Mr. Watt for the scholarship and I'll be attending Los Angeles Harbor College and to major in computer science and hopefully data science also.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this scholarship that has given us all something special for our future and it might help us in good hands and my name is Jacorlo Hernandez and I'll be majoring in city regional planning at Fresno State University.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Chelsea Rodriguez and it means more than enough for this scholarship, thank you so much and I'll be applying to attend Mount St. Mary's University of Los Angeles and study psychology in hopes of being a clinical psychologist for my community. Thank you.
If I can have all the students that won and like their family and parents that want to come and take one group picture real quick, that'd be great.
Oh, and as well as the principals and Dr. O'Brien.
What'd he say, Fresno? Why?
There are three more left and these are a little different. If I can have Darvis Johnson and the Holly Park Home Association come out as well and Ms. Love.
I've been out of school 60 years.
You can still go back. We'll go back together. Thank you.
No, no. For what?
So, Darvis wanted to, you know, I've, I've been spending a lot of time with Darvis Johnson lately and, and to really see how she leads Holly Park now, it's extraordinary. She really dives into the community and really wants to help out alongside, of course, you know, Ms. Love, but she wanted to create some kind of scholarship opportunity for the students that live in Holly Park and I thought that was an extraordinary idea. And so, there are two individuals that are quite special and Darvis could not say, she could not choose just one. She fought to have two scholarships for these two amazing students and without her in that corner swinging, you know, the two recipients, you should, you guys should thank Darvis Johnson and the Holly Park Home Association. Honestly, without them fighting for you guys, there would not be a scholarship for that community, so Darvis Johnson, again, I applaud you just on your effort. So, without further ado, the two students that have won are Michaela McNeil and Shelby Now, if we can have Shelby or Michaela come up and kind of give where your, your plans are, where you're graduating to and your major.
Hi, I'm Shelby May and I plan on attending Bucknell University and I'm going to study in like environmental science.
Hi, my name is Michaela McNeil and I just want to say thank you guys so much. I'm really grateful for this opportunity and I'll be going to Grand Canyon University and I'm going to major in psychology and I went to Notre Dame Academy.
Darvis, you want to say a few words on behalf of Ms. Love on the Holly Park-
I'll say that. I can always speak, you know? I think this is great. I've lived in Holly Park 58 years and I've been in City Hall 40, so I think this is one of the greatest things that could happen because, you know, my grandson went to school at Hawthorne High and he is teaching at Lawndale High, so it is some good stuff in Holly Park, you know? So, thank you for you to come to Holly Park and find some things, because it is great for these kids to know that we live in this city and to hear about other kids and want to thank all of you, because I know you do a great job, if we needed you, you would be there for us. So, thanks again for all you councilmen and now that I'm getting old and been out of school 60-some years, it's quite a surprise to be called up for graduation. Thank you.
If I can have everyone come out for a picture and your family as well and the parents. Yeah, is there, oh, actually another here, last one, promise, real quick. This individual, I've known her for quite some time, I've known her mother for- This individual, I've known her for quite some time, I've known her mother for quite some time. They've done quite a bit of work, especially within the Jamaican community. Her and her mother fly out to Jamaica to help out with the city of refuge, giving out food and clothing to needy families within the vicinity. So, I wanted to applaud them, and as well as, because of all the work she does, also acknowledge her and give her a scholarship from the foundation as well. And that is to Precious Simpson, and her mother is Lethell Williams.
Hello, City Council, hello Mayor. My name is Precious Simpson. I will be attending John T. Smith University in the state of Alabama, and I will major in forensic science and have a minor in mathematics.
Oh, wow. One last picture, and that's it. If you can have you and your mother as well, and the council for the last picture of the- Okay. Councilmember Awad has another presentation. Go ahead, sir. It's a busy month with graduation and everything like that. I believe we have our honorable council, State Treasurer Fiona Ma with us today, and I believe she has a presentation or something for the council, so again, thank you.
Thank you very much. I am in my fifth month of my job as your 34th California State Treasurer, so I am, so I am your banker. So, over $2 trillion goes through my office. I oversee close to $100 billion in state funds as well as the city of Hawthorne, and I also manage about $95 billion in bonds. And so, I am here, first off, to let you know that if you need a grant, a loan, or bonds, please call on me. And I'm just very happy to see that your city is so business-friendly. You all understand what drives the economy, how to balance your budget, and that puts a lot less pressure on me when cities and counties are doing their job. I also, since there's so many students here as well as principals, I want to let you all know that I also oversee the Scholar Share 529 Plan. So, if you invest $160 a month for 18 years, you can save $62,000 a year. And so, I'm really encouraging parents and grandparents, aunts and uncles to open up an account for that young person so that when they go to school, they will be able to get scholarships like the ones today, but also hopefully graduate with no debt. And I think that is, that is something that we should all aspire to, and Governor Jerry Brown signed a bill that funds first-year community college free for any first-time college student, and in Governor Gavin Newsom's budget, he is trying to fund the second year of free community college. So, we are really focused on education here, and I am actually here to present a certificate, a special congressional recognition from Karen Bass, who was my speaker when I was in the legislature, to HEDAR, in recognition of his outstanding and invaluable service to the community. And being the youngest city council member at 24, and now at the tender age of 28, it is, it is great, it is great to see, you know, our next generation really step up earlier than later. You are, and to all the young people here in this room, you are our next generation, and seeing all of you and where you're all going and what you're going to be studying is so inspirational for all of us. So, we are going to be leaving our hands to all of you, and I am here to present, again, this recognition from my speaker, Congresswoman Karen Bass to HEDAR, and I look forward to working with all of you on many of the projects soon to come here in your great city. So, thank you for having me, and thank you for allowing me to make this presentation.
So, welcome to the city of Hawthorne. Thank you for coming. So, we have the presentation, two presentations, two presentations from Councilmember Awad, one presentation to him, and the city manager's presentation. Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to stay up here for five minutes, we're going to have our cable, we're going to move on to the general meeting so that everybody can capture that, and it's going to be about five minutes worth of time, so council just stay up here because it's going to be probably less than that, two or three minutes. So, everybody, please stay seated. I'm going, anything further from council members or staff on this? Okay, we got like about three to five minutes for the next portion, so this meeting, this special meeting is adjourned, and we're going to wait for the regular meeting.